Bastrop City Council and ... is here for a special workshop meeting jointly with Bastrop Development Corporation. We're called to order, the Bastrop City Council, we have a board present. We're missing two of our members, so we're doing a board. And we are called to order.
All right, I'm going to try to order the Bastrop Development Corporation. We've got a board, and so we'll start conducting the meeting. Your point? And Sean, you've been open to a board workshop session. We'll start with the presentation.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Board. Steve called the workshop to order, and he's going to be running that and making sure that we stay on time and stay on topic. We've got a couple, our four different presentations, we're going to work through fairly quickly here. The first one is a presentation that was given to the board on September 21st by Mike Barnes, who was a consultant that we brought in out of Blanco. Mike runs an economic development consulting firm and site selection group in Texas and New Mexico. Does a lot of work in the Houston area, Hobbs, New Mexico, and around. He did an analysis of our current strategic plan and review, and worked with staff, and to kind of focus in on what he saw as our program of work and scope of work and the strategic plan moving forward. And he put a little bit of meat on the bones as it relates to the current strategic plan that was adopted. The general consensus of the board was to move forward with Mike's recommendations, and that is what staff has been moving forward with since the meeting in September. The best practices approach to the implementation and looking at what's going on. As you know, we all know where we're located, and we at the EDC have been focused really on looking at a work-lived community where our residents can work here, they can live here, they can play here, and be part of our community in a holistic fashion. The next slide here is the BEDC mission statement. We've had this mission statement for a considerable amount of time. Once we went through the process, we think it really describes well where we're at, what we're doing, and where we're going. And I was asked to go fairly quickly through this, so we kind of have some time constraints whenever we were planning this, so if I'm moving too fast, please raise your hand, speak up, let me know what's going on. So he looked at, are there any local assets that give us competitive edge? What clusters do we have here locally? Are they growing? What's going on within our industry? Are there other clusters that are emerging nationally undergoing dislocation, whether there's opportunity there? And he made a good point to all of us that communities are as unique as the people that live here, and so we've got to look at our assets in Bastrop and go, where do we fit into economic development? And so he went out and looked at what the fastest-growing U.S. industry is based on in the past 12 months, and this is that list pointing. And you look at a lot of these, and what's going on in Bastrop, and you see there's a lot of opportunity in there. Real estate agents and brokers are one, building construction, which we see a lot of in Bastrop, utility system constructions, computer systems and design down at number seven, non-residential construction, architecture and engineering, moving on down the list of things that are going on. This is a basis of what's growing in the United States and how that relates to us and where we can be competitive. It is in your packet, it's probably kind of small, we can send this to you electronically if you want to review this later. Also, it's in, you should have a book in front of you that looks kind of like this, and all of these slides and charts and graphs kind of follow along. This one's on page six, and it's a whole lot easier to read than PowerPoint is. So then we looked at the defined targets that were in the existing strategic plan and how they fit with Bastrop. When the strategic plan was adopted, target one was hotels, motels, and resort industries. We look at, when we go through what we can incentivize according to the law, we look at the North American industry, system classification codes, or NICS codes as we call them. And this here is a NICS code 72111. It's really defined by a limited group of operators that are the brands, and he lists those out in bullet number two, and goes through the data about that industry and where it's going, and the competitive landscaping around it, and the opportunities for business and tourist travel, and our location, and the amenities that we have to offer. And although this is probably the one that we focus the least on within our office, it's very important to Bastrop, and needs to be a focus for the community, and one that the EDC is aware of, and when opportunities arise, economic opportunities arise, that we're very aware of. And so target number two is one that is probably more relative to our day-to-day operations and our recruiting efforts, and our business retention and expansion efforts, because we have a known cluster in bio and life sciences in Bastrop and this part of Bastrop County. And when we look at this, Mike's recommendation in that, I think that is a good recommendation, is not only in the bio and life sciences as we know research and development, but also in the manufacturing and fabrication, in the plastics industry related to that, and also in the medical equipment side of the business. And he goes through the NICS codes here and kind of identifies the 32s and 33s down here at the ball, that layout industry classifications that we can target that make sense for Bastrop and what we do. And from these NICS codes, what it allows us to do is really drill down through companies in the United States that are looking to expand, relocate, grow, looking to add additional facilities. We're able to target those and come up with company lists and profile lists of people to be in touch with. We have access to data that provides that to us.
Sean?
Yes, ma'am?
Are you saying all these plastics-related things on here, that's a target industry for Bastrop?
Yes, ma'am. So plastics in the manufacturing process as it relates to bio and life sciences, they typically come by truckload. And what I mean by truckload, they're pallet loads of polymers in bags, and then it's a very clean process. It's not stinky and smelly, we're very aware of that. So when you look at plastic extrusion for the bio and life sciences medical industry, you're talking about catheters, you're talking about IV bags, you're talking about syringes, you're talking about sample bottles, your medication bottles. There's a number of uses within that industry that are very clean, they come in big palletized bags that they pick up off a forklift. We're not talking about heavy industrial, where you're talking about over-the-road 18-wheelers bringing in hopper loads of pellets. That may be a reality, but the quantities that they use is so small in that that they come by bag. There's a hopper facility down in San Antonio, they can truck them up here from there. They can also come out of the Houston market, but we're talking about the smaller quantities. My last community, we actually brought pellets in by rail to extrude high-density polyethylene pipe. That's not what we're talking about, where we were using two rail cars a day, which is equal to eight trucks. We're talking about a bag a day or two bags a day coming in an LTL freight. No, no problem. It's a good question. I mean, if you're not familiar with the industry, it runs the gamut. You go down to Houston and Fort Arthur Belmont, and they're manufacturing the pellets, that's a whole different process. So what we're looking at, construction opportunities, you see that it's a growing industry, it's moving in the right direction. There's lots of opportunities with our aging population and active adult community in the United States that you continue to see opportunities and expansions in that region. The chart on the right is about scientific consulting, and those companies that are providing research and development to drug manufacturers, to any type of new innovations within the life sciences and bio and life sciences cluster. These guys typically want to be near institutions of higher education that have research arms to them, because they're cooperating with the R&amp;D development of these universities. Our location here within the triangle of the University of Texas and specifically the Dell Medical Center that's being constructed, Texas A&amp;M, and then to some extent what's going on at San Marcos and down in San Antonio, UTSA, and Texas A&amp;M, San Antonio, we really are surrounded here by universities that are going to have research coming out that's going to be going into commercialization, and looking for companies to fabricate and continue the testing. The other thing that is drives bio and life sciences is really government spending at the federal level, and you're looking at scientific consulting, and you're looking at somebody like Lockheed Martin that's going out and being awarded large contracts to the federal government, and doing R&amp;D for development for the Army, for health sciences, whatever it may be. We in Texas are blessed with numerous military facilities that are engaged in this with their private contract partners. And again, if you can tie that with the research going on at the university level, our presence and the proximity we have to those facilities that make us attractive, also makes us attractive on the military side and in the commercialization. So we look at that. Moving on and looking at the top 10 states for market share of this, the top three, the Virginia, the Maryland, the District of Columbia, that is all really the Washington, D.C. hub. That's where the dollars come from. But the fourth one on the list, when it comes to spending within, outside of the Washington, D.C. area, is Texas. So they're highly interested in being in Texas because of the benefits that we've already discussed on the previous slide. And so looking at NICS codes and the 32s and 33s, medical equipment and supplies, it continues to be an occupation that is growing and a target that we need to be involved in. Target number three is one in the Austin metro area that makes logical sense for us, and information technology is all around us, and it runs the gamut from hardware to software and everything in between. Within the region, we contain a very good network, support network for these companies. Traditionally, Bastrop probably would not be as high on the list as some of the other communities in the region, but we now have figured out a way to possibly bring 1 gig fiber into Bastrop and be able to tap the fiber corridor on 71, and are looking at what that option is, and having access to that big fiber is going to make us more attractive as we continue to grow this emerging cluster that we have an opportunity to work in. We're looking at 56142, which is a business support primarily with our location within the region, medical inbound call centers. Whenever you call your doctor or your insurance company, and they've got a nurse's helpline, and they've got a registered nurse on the other end of the phone, that's a highly educated person that's making a good wage to answer your call to keep you out of the emergency room, to keep you out of urgent care, and it's a benefit that's provided by your insurance company. But those calls typically are domestic inbound calls by college-educated, received by college-educated professionals in the medical business, as well as insurance claims processing and some of those other things that go along with that. Those are typically because of the level of sophistication in that industry, very good physicians. And he goes on in the bold there to go through some of the major providers of, in that industry, and they're easy to target, we know who they are, we know where they're at, we know generally when they're looking for a new location to add expanded capacity. Looking on in, yes, ma'am?
I read recently that those sorts of companies are going more toward home-based calls, because they're not actually opening call centers anymore, but just allowing people to answer phones from remote locations. Do you find in that to be true?
There is, there has been some trend in that for some time. When you're talking about some of the more advanced medical calls that are going on, though, there's got to be controls in place. And so for the basic inbound telephone centers, yes, but for the more sophisticated ones, my understanding is they're still looking at establishing these centers. It's a relatively new field in the last half decade, and they're still working out on the medical side of those inbound calls, being able to fill those. Whenever you type the question in that your customer is asking you that the answer's coming up, and if it's not, you've got staff there on hand that are able to very quickly identify what it needs to be, because it's just like any other call center, there's a database of questions, and they know what questions to follow up with, but they want registered nurses, they want master's degree nursing people answering those calls, because it is medical advice. You don't want some layperson on the street telling you how to put a Band-Aid on or what to do in the event of a cut or bruise or some other catastrophic event that...
I just would caution you to track that, just so we don't spend a whole lot of money, get the fiber here only to find out that everybody's answering their calls remotely.
Well, in that, the fiber, on the other hand, is going to be needed by other industries as well. It's going to be needed by the bio and life sciences companies, that 1 gig fiber and their ability to upload and download clinical trial data to have it third-party tested and validated. You've got to be able to transmit large amounts of data, and so it's not just for that facility. You look at 5415511 and 12, custom commuter programming services. We still are in a very entrepreneurial environment with people coming out with new apps and new programs that solve those everyday dilemmas in our lives. You're looking at, most of it is led by major companies who we know where we are, but there's a lot of startup opportunity and small shop operations here.
I understand. Yes, sir.
When we meet with Opportunity Austin...
I might make one comment just to give you a last... A company, more than Bastrop, is like 4,000, 5,000 square feet, and they're basically a software company. And they relocated here to Las Vegas. They're looking between, either in Bastrop. And so they like Bastrop better, but the question was, you know, what kind of broadband do you have here? And they won't come unless we provide, you know, the kind of bandwidth that man would require. And that's been, it's pretty rough.
It's pretty significant what they need. We visited with a local company that could potentially put a backup data center in the Bastrop area for their operations across the state of Texas, and under today's environment, we don't have enough bandwidth for them to be able to have a backup data center here. And so there's a lot of need and demand here. We have a limited number of tech companies today, and the number one complaint in our office is we don't have enough bandwidth. They're shooting air fiber back to towers that are a pretty good distance away to meet their needs today, but if they had ground wire or hardwire of capabilities, they'd have the opportunity to bring some additional facilities here and continue to expand and grow. There's a lot, there's still a lot of entrepreneurial activity in the Austin market related to that. We met with the Austin Chamber today on several topics, and their technology group that works with local startups and plugs them in with ideal investors, and moving those projects down the road, they're still seeing good interest in IT-based companies on the software side, and somewhat on the hardware side as well, those engineers, those electrical engineers that work in that, those fields. We're still seeing good activity and good lead generation coming out of companies out of California that want to relocate to central Texas, and we still, through our regional partnership, have heavy recruiting efforts in California. I've already been once this year to California, and there's a good chance that I'll try to make it back at least one more time before the end of the year, if not right after the first of the year. Those companies continue to look at Austin because of the cost of doing business and operating here and the available talent. There's 165 people per day moving to Austin, Texas, and most of them, from what the data tells us, tells Beverly Kerr at the Austin Chamber, is they don't have jobs when they come here, but they know that they can find a job in a relatively short period of time, that they're talented and skilled in what they're doing. Number four is a traditional target for us in manufacturing. There's quite a few various NICS codes associated with this. Again, we're back in the 33s here on this page. Most of these involve some kind of metal-forming metal fabrication, looking at skilled fabrication or advanced manufacturing in these industries. And so what Mike came to us with is, Austin is the 12th largest city in the United States. We're looking, we're looking at 48, 49 as well, and one specific code, 54, one 1614, primarily operating in manufacturing operations, productivity improvement. Y'all can read the list here of what those are. So distribution logistics fall within these NICS codes, and so although we don't have a separate distribution logistics target, it really comes within manufacturing, because it's part of the manufacturing process on your supply side as well as your output side of what you're doing. And we continue to see, when we look at new distribution centers, new logistics centers that are opening up, they're very advanced. The Amazon Center that will be down in San Marcos very quickly, they go out on the web, and they're called Kiva robots, and these Kiva robots are little robots that go and pick product, and there's several YouTube videos out there that show how they work. This stuff, it's not going out there with a human anymore, picking it off the shelf, it's a computer programmer writing code, telling these robots where it is, how to go get it, and where to take it. A lot of it is done in the dark. These facilities are very LEED-certified facilities in which if the lights don't have to be on, they turn them off. And so it's an interesting, interesting part of what's going on in distribution logistics. So we're looking at the kind of the program of work update here, and how we measure success and know what's going on within the EDC. And so you start up here at the top, and you're looking at, are the inquiries increasing as a result of the strategy? The board is, we meet with them on a monthly basis, kind of go through our lead sheet. We are responding to more opportunities, and we're seeing more inbound opportunities. And are the site visits increasing? The general rule of thumb for us at the moment is we are seeing more site visits. We've got a couple that are in the early planning stages of projects that we're working on. Are we submitting more proposals as a result of this? We'll have that opportunity as we see more lead generation and we have more site visits that we're putting proposals together for companies to look at Bastrop. Are we finalists within the site selection process? We're having some success in this currently, and going to have some opportunities to move forward on some projects in the next six to 12 months that we're excited about. And as a result of that, are more firms locating in Bastrop? The one thing we know about economic development, it's not an overnight process. This is something that we've got to have implementation today to generate leads, to have responses to those, to engage the company in our community through the site visits and making proposals to them to come here, and then we'll have the opportunity as a finalist to close those deals and get them up and operational here. It's a process that can take some time. There's guys that come in the door, and three weeks later, they're ready to sign on the dotted line. There's guys that come in the door, and three years later, they're ready to sign on the door. So it's always a process that works through there. So we look at our program of work update and what we traditionally have done, and primary job creation and expansion, and we have some opportunity in expanding some local companies here. Those are always the easiest projects to work, they're already here, they're sold on Bastrop. It's really figuring out what we need to do to help them grow locally, to create more capital investment, to create more jobs, and to continue their business. We have the business and industrial park, and in my second presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about what's going on in the industrial park. Business retention and expansion, I covered the expansion part of it, but business retention, we're going to get out more and visit more, especially with our primary employers and then our secondary employers as well, to find out what's going on in our business community, and what opportunities that they have, what challenges they face, what we're doing well is just as valuable for us. There's, it's a very important part of economic development. We're spending a lot of time working on education and workforce development, which we'll be more in-depth in the second presentation. Retail development, infrastructure, affordable housing, we support the Main Street program, we support entrepreneurial and small business development, downtown community redevelopment, community development and marketing. These are really the things that, on a weekly basis, daily basis, the areas that we work in, and our team does a really good job at balancing today's work, we're looking forward to what we need to do to be successful long-term and to continue a good pipeline of projects that create jobs and allow our residents to live and work here. This goes into the program of work. There are a couple of national associations, international associations now for both of these. The International Asset Management Council is one that we are currently a member in. It is probably one of the best networking events that we attend, and we're able to meet directly with companies and their real estate professionals and their site selectors and sell Bastrop, and this is really personal selling 101 is what we do. It's a relationship business. They're given a choice of going to do business with somebody they know versus somebody they don't know. Most times out of not, they're going to choose somebody that they do know. We also need to continue looking at our allied groups, all Team Texas that sells Texas. It's part of the Texas Economic Development Council, it's one of their committees, it's a marketing arm, and does lead generation. They're doing quite a few events this fall, doing an event in New York here coming up that will be hosting site selectors and out of New York, which are a lot of credit analysts and guys that work on the incentive side of the practice. They'll be down at South Tech in Charlotte, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday after New York. And South Tech is a very large manufacturing show in which they have preset leads to visit companies that have expressed an interest in expanding or relocating in Texas. And following that up, they'll be heading to Fabtech in Chicago, in which Fabtech is probably the largest metal fabrication show in the United States. I can tell you that I have been to Fabtech, and I have attempted to walk the entire floor, and it is a very daunting task at the form of a place. And so having allied partners that we're able to divide and conquer at events like that is mission-critical if we're going to make all the contacts that are necessary. We share leads among each other so that we all have a fair shot, because I cover Call A and somebody else covered Call B, it saves us time and resources, because we're not having to spend every day in Chicago at the show, and we've seen benefits from that previously. Down the road, the third one here, there'll be some opportunities for us to host companies here, host site selectors here, either regionally or locally. In the business, they're called fan tours. They're quite expensive to host, we're not at that level today, but it's definitely something on our radar. If we had the right group today, we would figure out how to make it happen. But as we move forward, and these two are successful for us, we'll look at what we need to do, either individually or with our regional partners, to bring companies in to see Bastrop, bring site selectors in that are active in our market and in industries that we recruit in, and show them the assets that we have, because I can tell you, when we do the window tour with a site visit, and we take them out from our office, and we drive 71, we drive to Park, we go to East Bastrop, up to Tahitian, and come back through downtown, which I, the mayor, I told the mayor before, the chicken sanctuary is actually one of the highlights of the tour. Fifty percent of the time, they want to stop and take pictures. So you would think that's kind of strange that we swing out there and pick that up and come back through the convention center parking lot, but it is one of the highlights of the tour, and a good portion of the time, they're like, oh, I got to take a picture of this and send it back to, they know somebody that has chickens, or they have, it's the craziest thing. The convention center obviously shows well from the street, Main Street shows well from the street, and so we head back to our office. Synopsis of how we go, if you ever want to go on the window tour, please feel free to give me a call, and I'll be glad to take you on. We've modified every time based on what the company wants to see and how much time we have, and it's generally what we do, we take a model window tour. The other thing that we have to do is always stay on top of our data and our website. We invest heavily in updated data on an annual basis related to what we're doing and where we're working. We also have access to data through our regional partnership with Opportunity Austin. Beverly Kerr and her team are always happy to do whatever they can to provide us relevant data to whatever we're working on. And a user-friendly website. Most searches today... Most searches today, they start on our website. We don't even know we're on the long list until they've gone to our website. They've narrowed it down. If we don't have the information they're looking for, we can get eliminated and never know that the company was considering Bastrop, Texas. It's an interesting dilemma that we face because we really want, we want to put just enough data out there to stay on the list, but not enough that they want to call us to. So it's a balancing act there between too much data that we can eliminate ourselves and just enough data that they're going to want to call us. And we monitor that fairly closely. We track our website hits. We track the data that's on there and make sure that it continues to be current. We also here need to be identifying site selectors. We have not done this since I've been here, but in my last community, it was something that we did on a fairly regular basis, a couple of times a year. For us in Bastrop, going to Dallas where if a site search in Texas is going on, somebody in a Dallas office is involved in that search. And so we've got contacts at most of the major site selection firms that are based out of Dallas. Most of Jones Lang LaSalle has an office up there. Site Selection Group has a large office up there. There's probably two dozen of them up in the Dallas, Baltimore region. We'll probably be going up there sometime in the spring to Dallas and making those calls. And then following up later in the year with a specific marketing trip to one of the other major markets for site selectors. Atlanta always makes sense for us. Chicago always makes sense for us. The only way we go to New York is if we're doing it as part of a regional group or a state group that's calling on site selectors up there. We've got to be able to dollar-cost average of going to New York and calling on site selectors. Because what we know in doing this for a while, everybody in this room can get a map out, I can put the roads on there, I can hand you a pen, you're going to pay Bastrop for every single time because you understand our geography and where we're located in Texas. Once you get outside of central Texas and you get outside of Texas, that's not always the case. And location, location, location. And people knowing that we're in Austin metro community and the resources that we have to offer, we've got to be first and foremost in their thought process, oh, we're thinking about central Texas, okay? We're thinking about Austin. Oh, we met that guy in Bastrop. Let's call him and see what Bastrop has to offer because we were impressed by him, he had good community knowledge. They seem like they had something going on, but it's because we went to them and said, here's Bastrop and this is what we have to offer. We'll do this a couple of times a year, independent of any organizations that we're involved in. And when the right opportunities arise within the partnership organizations that we're in, we'll travel with them as well. The other thing that Mike and staff and I talked about a lot was an internal marketing campaign. We've got to do a better job of telling our story in Bastrop so that y'all know what's going on. And the second presentation I have tonight is a modified version of the Chamber presentation I did at their luncheon last month. We need to get out more and do that. We need to have informational, information on the PEG channel so people can hear what's going on. We're working on written stuff to go in the newspapers so that people know what we're working on and what's going on with us. But within the community, we've got to do as good a job as we can. Our website and social media, the staff does an excellent job. I'd like to say that I do it all, but I don't. Jeanne and Angela, in fact, I don't even know the passwords to any of those. Jeanne and Angela take care of those posts. And on the Buy Bastrop theme right now, we're doing a business of the week in partnership with the Chamber and Main Street, focusing on locally owned businesses or small businesses in the community and what their offerings are. We've got our own Bastrop Economic Development Facebook page. We've got our Twitter and Instagram accounts that we're trying to get more information out there for what we're doing. On the business retention and expansion, we were at Opportunity Austin today and that would there be R and E specialist on staff. This is not a new program to Bastrop, but it's going to be done at a very much higher level than we've traditionally done. We will set some number of visits per year that we're doing with local businesses. Mike recommended a minimum of 50. We're probably looking at about two a week is what we're hoping to average, somewhere around 104. By the time we schedule those, go sit with a business owner or a general manager, plant manager, for an hour, two hours of time, we were, visit with them about, they normally have a very standard questionnaire that we're getting open-ended questions for. We record that information from them and then we have a database that we put that back into. I think the number's probably going to be two a week is what we're aiming for. Also, as part of this program, we've started having business leaders lunches. Christie was at the first one that we had last month. We'll be having another one here in October and we hope, if not first part of November, getting ready for this kind of ate some of our time up. But we'll do those month in, month out. One of our board members will be involved or be invited to be involved in that every month. We also, if the city council so desires, a city council person is more than welcome to attend. But those lunches are really just business leaders sitting down and having a casual lunch together and telling us what's going on in their industry and their world and getting an update from us. And so this all comes full circle in what we're doing, engaging and going to opportunities that allow us to engage with site consultants and companies that we're interested in recruiting. It's a whole lot easier for me to call up the real estate executive at Fortune 500 Company X if I've met them at some other event. We've got a partner with our allied groups that are out there with Team Texas, with Opportunity Austin. The fan tours and site selector visits, you know, throughout the years as we meet the people up the chain, we're scheduling those and going out and seeing them. We're maintaining our website, keeping the data current, large events to have our own lead generation. Although we always generate leads from regional partners, we always generate leads locally, we also have to have our own lead generation mechanism internally to be working with, making the community knowledgeable in our internal marketing campaign and then our business retention and expansion program. And one of the things we always ask our local businesses when we visit with them is, who are your suppliers and do they need to be in Bastrop? Who are you selling to and do they need to be in Bastrop? Because a lot of times, they may be the largest customer of some vendor that's located 500 miles from here. And it's beneficial for that company that is producing some component or some material to have an operation in Bastrop so their largest customers' needs are being met. Or they may be the largest vendor for some company. And we would sure rather that the end user be in Bastrop with their vendor than the alternative of that other EDC coming and getting our company and moving closer to the end user. So we're always very aware of those things. Looking at the conclusion on this, we've got to build a solid foundation. We've spent the last six months working on some structural issues within the EDC, some of our marketing materials and how we sell Bastrop. That map you saw on the first slide of where Bastrop is, that was developed about a month ago and it clearly identifies where we're located in Texas. We have a series of those now related to the various industries we market in. We have regional maps that show a better location of where we're at. We really have to work on our foundation. Also, educational workforce development and skills development here. The number one site selection criteria we continue to hear is workforce. If you don't have them, they ain't coming, is a very simple way to put it. We can't go recruit IT companies if we don't have software coders or electrical engineers, guys that can fill those positions. We're blessed in that we're in the Austin metro area and there's a lot of them available to us. But if we started going out and recruiting into some industry that we didn't have the workforce, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us. Once we get through this and move into having that good foundation, as we have a proven track record of success and companies looking at us and winning here, we'll continue to be able to have a strong economic development program in the future. And we need to continue looking at our youth and developing our needed skills of our young people because I know that many of y'all are parents, many of y'all are grandparents with kids that have gone through Bastrop High School or Cedar Creek High School. And don't we want those kids and grandkids to be able to live and work for grandma, grandpa, mom and dad are living? And so we've got to provide those kids out of high school job opportunities as well as those kids that go on college, job opportunities to come home because they're not coming home if there's not a job here. They're going to go where the workforce is. Regional state partners, continuing to work with those, looking to capitalize on weaknesses and threats. You know, we're not perfect. We've got to continue to go, how can we be better at what we are, a better community? Looking at enhanced marketing, looking at infrastructure improvements through creative financing approaches. We're looking at several of those throughout the community. Be global. There's a, the United States is still a preferred vehicle for direct foreign investment. There's a lot of opportunity there as well as in technology firms that are based in Austin doing business in Eastern Europe and South America. It's all about the relationship. We're marketing within the region as well. That's that internal marketing and external marketing. Companies that are looking to expand locations, you know, you may have an operation in Houston and have a large client in Austin and you expand in Bastrop because you're able to service that Austin market. So Mike goes on and lays out kind of what he sees the year one, two, three, four and five, and I'll let y'all go through that. It's kind of hard to read up on the screen. But it's a three to five-year process to build that backbone of what we're doing. It's not going to happen in six months. And I believe that it's in the next five years.
What kind of incentives are you offering businesses to locate here?
You know, we keep the toolbox open. We do not have a incentive formula that we specifically use. We look at it on a case-by-case basis and it depends upon what industry they're in as well as the value of the jobs and capital investment to the community. I have some general rules of thumb that I've advised the board on in executive session and deals that we've looked at of what that return on investment should be. But typically, what we're investing in the company as the EDC on behalf of the community because that's what we're doing, we want to see that investment returned back to the city, the school district, the county in three to five years. And what happens is if we'll make those investments today, three to five, and it'll hurt for three to five years, but if you consistently do that year after year, we'll start getting that money back as a community and seeing the ultimate benefit after that three to five years. And we have a cycle of those going through. There are some deals out there when we do the ROI analysis on it that are catalyst projects that are max deal type of projects that can go out to an ROI of 10 years. But there's got to be some kind of secondary investment, return on investment that's going to be happening from that. It's an interesting dilemma. We've got to, everybody thinks they're catalyst project, but that's not, that's not reality. We have a couple in the region. The High Loss Pines is a catalyst project. It changed Bastrop for 10 years later, we look at and go, well, that was a really good investment. Well, that was a 10-year investment that we made in that project, that the county made in that project. And so there's things like that that are catalyst project that really put us on the map in the tourism industry and someplace that you want to come and be and shop and the Chestnut Infrastructure Improvement Project out there, although it's not a company project, it really changed your experience in being downtown. And so there are projects out there that your return's not going to be directly from them, it's going to be indirect. And so those are few and far between. If it's an industry we want to be in and it's a growing industry, maybe that catalyst project's something we want to go out 10 years. But three to five normally is what you're looking at.
What are the types of incentives that you can consider?
Well, you're looking at, you know, within the business park, you're looking at land grants or reduced land. You're looking at job incentives. You're looking at infrastructure incentives. You're looking at 380 agreements. I prefer 380 agreements over property tax abatements. It's just my preference. I'd rather somebody go pay their taxes and us rebate it to them versus abating the tax upfront. That's a personal preference and I think that's out of the community here. When you look at workforce development and skills development and those types of programs through the Texas Workforce Commission, industry training through those programs and partnering with the community college and the high schools and what can happen through those programs. The state programs are still in the enterprise zone and enterprise funding is still in existence and for large projects and the state is ready and willing to help us on those. We can also look, emerging tech went away. It got rolled into the governor's initiative for higher education, hiring university professors. So there's an array of them and every deal is different. We don't have a tax increment reinvestment zone currently in Bastrop, but being able to take that increment and invest in infrastructure within a specific redevelopment zone or within an increment financing zone, there's some of those mechanisms that are out there. So we look at it holistically as what's the project need? Because everybody's a little bit different. Some of them need cash, some of them need low-interest loans.
The only thing I was trying to say too is that not every deal has got a formula that is return on investment. It's not necessarily a mathematical or financial return. A lot of it is, you know, we need jobs, you know, it's going to promote, you know, additional higher-paying positions. And that's going to grow other industries, you know, companion industries and things like that. I mean, he's right, there's not one, one set formula for any of that, you know, that makes money.
That's good to know. I remember the days when it was just free land.
Yeah, deal structuring, deal structuring is what I love. It is really finding out what the company needs in a structured way because if we just offered land, it may not be, they may be able to rise a check for the land.
Right. I'm glad you progressed.
I would say you're the most flexible tool to create because there's so many things that you can do with a creator, but also what you can build in your creator, your performance measurements, and they must meet certain levels of format or certain levels of tax base addition. And if they don't, then they don't get what we offered them back. So it gives you the flexibility, structure in your field. Before I get started, Mike, it's a wonderful opportunity to be addressing both the council and the EDC board. I couldn't think of a better council to work for. I'm glad that every day I come to work, locked on the front door, hesitant change, so I know I'm still applying. I do have a few of my staff members here and I hope you're remiss if I didn't recognize them. Trey Joe, our Director of Public Works, done a great job in enhancing our street program. Ms. Tracy Chavez, past club with me every day and my changing schedule. Ms. Nancy Wood, who was our former Main Street manager, as I think I understand, she's going to come back and give us a helping hand, straighten me out one more time. And so we're delighted to have Nancy coming back on for a short interview period. And in the back is our, I would still say, our new city secretary. It's great that we finally stole an employee from the city of Austin. And it's Ann Franklin. She worked for the city of Austin for a number of years and I cannot tell you what an addition she has been to our staff and to everyone here and what she's brought to the table. We're very blessed to have her here. And of course, I would be remiss not without recognizing our city attorney who keeps me out of jail, so that's, I'm very, very fortunate. I'm going to keep this brief. There were, I feel like every morning I walk in here, I feel like General Creakin Adams during World War II in the European theater, and it was a very bleak moment. Things were not going well, they were completely surrounded, northeast, west and south. And General Adams took that unique opportunity to call all of his generals and colonels together and he said, gentlemen, for the first time in war, we have the unique opportunity to attack in any direction we so choose. That's kind of the way we look at it when we walk in here. We don't know what we're going to have to take after. I want, this is by far our number one priority project. It gets addressed every day in the city. Over the past several months, the city staff has been actively giving various options and alternatives to secure existing and future water supplies. What's been done, we've worked on extending plans to reduce fishing in the park, pumping by 50% on January, by January 2017, or possibly to 2018. We now meet weekly to assess current wellfield operations, supply needs and plans. We have meetings with the Land and Christian Company, who has instituted a well maintenance program for our city wells. And we do defensive monitoring throughout the whole system to make sure that we'll be throughout the whole system to make sure that we're meeting demands, our water demands. Our per capita consumption is down some, which is good. And the efficiency of our well operations is very, very effective today. We did look at doing a collector well system at Will Park, but that didn't turn out. So, we're looking at some other options as we're getting toward our permit. We also are looking at increasing capacity of well eye. We had a meeting for three hours this morning. We think that there's good possibility of expanding well eye from a 400 gallon well to a 700 gallon well. I'll show you some slides here, but two critical projects that I'll be to the council about Tuesday night is installing another 16-inch water line across the river over there on 71. And we were very fortunate when FM 20 came in, when the ore pass, there was a small silver of land left and the state sold it to us for $2,000, about a quarter acre. But the importance of that piece of tract land, it is the exact same elevation as the tank at Minnepest Park. And so, that would create a perfectly balanced water system and greatly enhance our, our water capabilities here in the city. We continue to have discussions with Aqua by Interconnect and we're evaluating the possibility of double bluff site if necessary. We're considering building a cask holdout at the waste water plant site west of town. We are under review, our drought contingency plan, encourage water conservation. We just completed a $1.6 million project. We no longer have meter readers at all. It's all now electronically read and also has a warning detection system to notify us if there's a water break out there. Or if you as a customer are using more water than you normally do, it'll pop up on the screen that this is a customer we should call because they're using more water than they should be. This is the one I'm most excited about. It's been a long process. Our hearing is coming up on November the 9th. We have been, completed our discovery and I had the great opportunity to be your host. The testimony has been blocked. But the most exciting news, I'm here to help the council tonight, is yesterday, the protesters all filed what we call a summary judgment. And basically, that was a summary judgment to kick our permit out saying it was an invalid permit. I have been in my career, I've been in many cases in federal court, appellate court, and state district court. And normally, a judge will not rule on a summary judgment for at least two to three months. He ruled this afternoon that that summary judgment was worthless and threw it out. So, that was a great, great. And we're, we're very excited about that. And I can't tie the hours of work that went in the documents that we had to do, but that's a big step forward in getting our permit. Our next big project is a comprehensive plan. Work accomplished today, we've done some community input and overview, planning on community profile and some general discussions. The last hearing committee had a patient statement. They discussed population projections. We broke out an area of ventilation. One completed. It will have nine chapters. And you're gonna see chapters in there that you don't see in our current plan like cultural arts and tourism. We're, we're spending a major portion of the money on our transportation planning. And a lot of effort has been put into the planning and context of the vision of our community toward my goal. We project to have this delivered to the council by June of next year. Update on the water system distribution. This is where we're gonna go back up here to 95 and 71 and extend the 16-inch main all the way across and try to get this done before this, this part of work gets done. 71 and tie into the Perkins, Higgins Street area to create a double source connectivity because most of our supply is on this side of, of the river. And then the second part, there's a tract of land that I was talking about, proposing to put a 1 million gallon LA tank. We're seeing the need for that 1 million gallon tank become more and more critical every day with the demands because of the girls in the western area of the city. And it will do a great job in balancing out our water system. Update on our wastewater. We're gonna have some major challenges coming up. We're in the process right now of offering bids to Luttrell Mine Law, Gilth Ranch, and the Wilson Association and do some retrofitting at the wastewater plant. These are all existing facilities. And this area to the west, this is all the city's what we call wastewater CCN. We're gonna be discussing with the council, the construction of a 1.5 million gallon treated plants with a major trunk line approximately in this area. We're working in coarts with that tract on the west. They were a mud that was sprayed back in 2002. And we're hoping this partnership will help us put together a better financial package to reduce down the shop of such an expensive project. But the sewer demands are growing. Under TC, you get TC guidelines. You have to start designing a new plant when you're 75% capacity and be under construction when you're 90%. We're right now at 58%, so we're creeping up. We monitor that. But this is gonna be a, between the water projects and water supply in this, we're gonna have our hands full for the next three or four years on getting these infrastructure elements in place, which will be critical for the BDC's recruitment of industry into the community. Update on the Economic Development Corporation, Main Street and energy improvements. The scope of the, of the Main Street is from pine, the farm, new sidewalk, from spring to pine. We have about 56% of the easements right now. At November, BDC board meeting, we're gonna be giving the board a report based on surveying and, and various trials, four options for you to look at. And I'm sure you're gonna be sending back to council as I give your report. But this is a BDC funded project and the city will be administering it on behalf of BDC. But we're excited, like to get these picked off sometime after the first year. But we're balancing some other projects that we'll talk about in a second.
What's, what's the timeframe on the payment project once it starts?
Nine months, really. But what we're gonna, what part we think we're gonna do as well as we find, after nine years, we purchase the advertiser. This is just one schematic layout of what it could look like back there. But we're gonna combine this project with Main Street. One, to get a better cost. Two, enhance this back here first for parking while we have, then we'll move on to Main Street to reduce down the impact when the Main Street project will be done. And Main Street will be done in four phases. We'll do one sidewalk and then go over to another sidewalk and one side of the road and then the other side of the road. And most of this work will be done at night. And so, it's not like we're gonna rip up from pine all the way to spring. I mean, Chestnut, we'll, we'll rip up maybe 200 feet of concrete. They'll form it, put that section in, and then move to another section to minimize the impact to store owners. And this back here with parking, it should really soften the ball when construction goes out there. And the majority of that work is gonna be called forward and gone tonight.
My question, where I was going with this is that, we're gonna do that in conjunction with what they do on 95 and 71?
Yes, that's right.
I know at one time we thought about doing separately at a different time, but now they're, they're still putting the paperwork to start 95.
Yeah, I'm on it. And just to say, this is a project that's year and year to my heart. I'm on my last year of my tenure contract. I started this project when I first got here. And with the help of my very able administrative assistant, we were able to get 99 easements all the way down through there. At last council meeting, the council awarded clearing out Gilth Ranch and hopefully in a couple months, it'll clear this entire area clean out and greatly enhance the appearance of our town. And of course, that's part of transportation. The 71 is going to continue to have an impact in my own city. The project is currently under construction and Gilth has here at Tishy Village and 71. This is still left for December letting and in August, I mean, excuse me, December letting, February construction. And that project, remember, ended up there. The last phase is coming down here with service roads all the way around. That, that project is under design, is not complete, and is not funded. But the most current information per effect, it should be funded within the next two years. So, that's a quick brief over here. I'd like to want to hit some major infrastructure areas, because I think that's gonna be important for some of your planning.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, Sean, presentation on, I guess, workforce development, business expansion expansion, marketing.
This is a, this is kind of our roadshow presentation that we have going on. And we've added some slides, taken some out from the last time I presented this, chamber lunching. Our current staffing level, what was approved for the current fiscal year is three and a half staff. Gene is still working with us as a part-time economic development coordinator. Angela and I are a full-time staff as the assistant director and executive director. We're working on onboarding Gene in a full-time position sometime in the, in the next couple of weeks is our goal. We have our fingers crossed in getting her stuff ingrained. It's, it's a fun process, I can say the least. So, we're covered by seven of the board of directors. And the local governance on that, everybody's probably familiar with, appointed by the mayor with council confirmation, seven members, the mayor, up to two council members, business community leaders, one board member from the county is in our bylaws. A little bit different from the city charter and other boards of commission. Our, the state law, chapters 501 to the 505 of the local government code, our board terms are limited to two years. And so, that's a little bit different from the rest of the boards of commissions and city council in Bastrop. We're governed in state law and the local government code, chapters 501 to 505. There's other resources available about economic development corporations and how we, we operate and are governed. If you're ever interested, contact my office and we either have copies or provide you the link. The TML handbook is quite extensive. And if you ever want to know about incentive programs in the state of Texas, it is probably the most comprehensive compilation of, of those programs and a very good explanation. Jeff Moore is the attorney that, that writes on that. He used to be at the AG's office. He's now at a law firm in Dallas and is probably one of the architects of economic development. Interesting facts that some people know and some people don't. We're a nonprofit corporation. We're a 501(c)(3). We're a non-political subdivision because our board is appointed and not elected. We are subject through the act to the Open Meetings and Public Information Act. And the city council's role has several different roles, but primarily ratify our articles of incorporation in bylaws, appoint the board of directors. You hear it said occasionally, approve the expenditure of funds is what we talked about. You'll hear it say approving a project. Really what the council was approving is the expenditure of the funds related to the project. Economic development, this is the IEDC, our National International Association's definition of economic development. You know, we're, we're really looking to influence the process for the benefit of the community through expanded job opportunities in the tax space. That's the industry definition. William Fruth at Polycom was here last year for the Blue Eye Economic Development Forum. It is really, his presentation and what he talked about there is something that really that I travel with the community, people talk about a lot. And he explains it in such a way that is very understandable. But really what we're looking at is new dollars coming into our economy through the spigot, being turned around in our local economy, then we have slippage out the bottom of the bucket. And our goal is always to be putting new dollars in the top of the bucket faster than we're losing them out the bottom, which means we've got a healthy, growing economy. And he really is a primary job creation advocate and talks about primary business is paid for with goods and services. And when wealth enters the local economy, it's turned and ripples through. He actually has a very good, longer article and explanation that this comes from and it's part of this presentation. Had a lot of impact on the community. I wanted to hear this here. So, these are slides that we, we, we had in and we've taken out and we put them back in for this presentation. We use them sometimes and sometimes we, we don't. But for the, this meeting, it's, it's very relative. We're what's referred to as a type B economic development corporation. And why we're covering it, A will be covered in three slides, so bear with me here. What we can do is fund land, buildings, equipment, facilities, improvements, and expenditures related to these industries. You know, we're looking at all the things that we were talking about earlier in corporate facilities and warehousing and manufacturing, job training, airport facilities. And this is not relevant to us, but I B projects will go over approval. What we can do is provide, provide facilities with these primary purposes, transportation, solid waste, general water and sewer services, air and water pollution control, and direct financial purposes is what an A can't do. Why do we talk about what As can and can't do? Because we have all the authority in the act to do everything that A can do. So, that's the, why a lot of communities, when they have to make a choice, we're gonna adopt an A or a B. A B has, has other opportunities. We can have water supply facilities in a special election that's something that Bastrop has done. We're funding $600,000 over a 10-year period for water supply facilities to the city of Bastrop. Quality of life improvements, including parks, professional amateur sports, athletic facilities, tourism, event facilities, affordable housing. The key word for us, you hear us talk about it a lot when it comes to these types of improvements, improvements are expenditures that promote new or expand business activity that creates or retains primary jobs. And so, we're always looking at, does it create new business activity? And that's what is really a key catalyst for us going, is it a B project or not? When you look at what Bs can do, we can't build bargaining centers. And the city of Bastrop decided we wanted to expand the library. We're not your funding mechanism for that. It's explicitly excluded within the law. We can't fund city hall. You want to build a new police station, a, a new city hall, public work facility, we can't do buildings, municipal buildings. K through 12 educational facilities, we can't find, provide funding directly to the ISD for facilities at the ISD. If you're over 20,000, which is not us, you can't provide direct incentives to retail. That's kind of what we can and can't do. And that's also in the slides. And if you ever have questions, feel free to give me a call. I know it gets confusing. And either JC or I can, can answer those questions when we can. And who, and we're focused more today on primary job creation than we probably have traditionally in the last few years. And why is that? Because it's follow the money. What primary jobs do in our economy is bring new dollars in to have the opportunity to be resurfaced. Those dollars from us selling a widget to California, and those dollars come here and that company then all of a sudden is able to pay their payroll and our employees have disposable income. They're investing in new facilities here, which is benefiting the appraisal rolls, which, once they, they pay out those wages, we all of a sudden have the opportunity for that disposable income to be captured by our retailers and our service providers and those other secondary employers within our market. And ultimately, through this process, we're collecting sales tax, we're collecting adware taxes that help fund municipal services for, for the community. And this is where it starts, a primary job of bringing those dollars in. That's that spigot dropping into that bucket. And so, what we look at is multiply our effect of those. And we always start out here at advanced technology jobs. advanced technology jobs, and that one job at a technology company, advanced technology company, generally speaking, creates seven new jobs. And the mayor asked the question, how does it create seven new jobs? He didn't know he asked that question. Through that disposable income that comes into that company, when it gets circulated through the economy, it goes through the economy seven times. And every time it goes through the economy, it gets chipped off, so it may spend fourteen, fifteen, some part of that in our economy going around, and especially when it's being spent in a buy-local type of environment, which we support the buy-local campaign, the Baskdrop Facebook page. We want to keep those dollars here as long as we can. When you go off and we leave town and go to Austin and buy something, those dollars are gone, they're not coming back. And so any chance somebody gets, they need to be buying local. Looking at a manufacturing job, you're looking at two spinoffs, two additional companies that are either a supplier or a vendor. You're looking at three hundred thousand dollars in economic impact because they're making something and shipping it out and bringing those dollars back to us. One that's very relevant to Baskdrop is the wealthy retiree. How on earth is that a primary job? Yes, I know you don't. Angel's back there making fun of it. So think about yourself. If you live someplace else and you went and earned work till you're sixty-five years old, you've got your 401K, and you've got your pension and your social security, and all of a sudden you decide you're going to move to Baskdrop, Texas and retire here. And you decide to come and retire in Baskdrop, and those dollars are new to Baskdrop because you earned them someplace else. They don't circulate as much as an advanced technology job, but it's three new jobs from that retiree coming here and spreading that pension type of 401K, social security type of income here in Baskdrop. Yes, it's not new income to them, but it is new income to us, a new influx of dollars. Fast food, retail jobs, they're one-tenth of an additional job for each one of those because those employers or those employees, they don't have disposable income of an advanced technology or a retiree, but they're very important to our economy and being able to capture dollars, but it's typically a one-tenth multiplier. So let's talk a little bit about our program, and I know I have gotten some questions from council members that wanted me to address where we're at. We're going to start with our marketing and recruiting efforts at the top here. We have to balance marketing and recruiting against the bottom two. There's opportunity for us to continue to go out and recruit new industries, existing industry expansion within those clusters we talked about earlier. It's critically important for us to do that because those are new dollars that we bring into our economy from a new business coming here, making that capital investment and being part of our community. We probably spend a great deal of my time working on that, but it's probably not the most important of what we do. We know that education and workforce development is the number one site selection criteria that companies are looking at, and we know that available workforce is critical. In our shop, we consider affordable housing as part of that. We've got several partnerships out there that we've worked with in there, and we are working, we're making sure you're doing right. We're working with the Baskdrop County Business and Education Alliance on some education projects with HB five and our community college partners, and Carlos has been instrumental in bringing that group to the table, and we're excited to support them and look at what the opportunities are within those industries that have interest in developing our local workforce and keeping it here. We work with Kay and Kelly in the past twelve months, with the youth job fair, with the adult job fair, and letting everybody know that, hey, there are jobs in Baskdrop, and come and apply and be part of our community, and we're very appreciative for all three of y'all's work on those projects. We know that we've got some work to do there. That's going to be part of Gene's focus within our shop, is working with those groups as well as other groups and providing that youth education, workforce development, but also adult education and workforce development across those trade areas and skill areas that we have demand. Business retention and expansion, when we look at an expansion project or we look at projects in general, we go, what's our win ratio going to be? If it's a local company that's already in Baskdrop, and we go out and visit with them, and they say, hey, we want to expand, we want to add ten thousand square meters, ten employees, guys, they're already here, we don't even have to go find them. We had to walk across the street to go and meet them, and they're going to create some number of CapEx, some number of jobs, and so it's, it's everything. Our win ratio is going to be in that ninety, ninety-nine, eighty percent range. Very seldom should we lose a local company if we're doing our BRD correctly. When we look at marketing and recruiting, and we generate a lead internally, it's one that we, the EDC, went out and prospect did. You know, our win ratio, if it's ten percent, twenty percent, I'd be surprised. If it is a state lead that comes in from the governor's office or the lead that's generated through Opportunity Austin, our win percentage is probably even less than that. So where do we need to be focusing a lot of effort where we're going to have a high win percentage? Some business retention and expansion is already in our backyard, they want to be here. We don't have to sell them on coming to Baskdrop. Gene is also going to work on our BRD program and be making those company visits along with myself. Angela will be making some of those as well. We're really going to go out there and go visit with our business leaders and get them engaged in what we're doing. When we look at economic development as economic practitioners, these are the core economic development topics. Every EDC should be doing these four items. What's not shown on here, and we're very appreciative of Angela, and Gene pointed this out to me today, is Angela's seventh year anniversary today. She has been with the EDC. We were so busy prepping for this meeting, and I actually told her yesterday, hey, your reviews tomorrow, and today we were so busy on this that we forgot to. So we will be having cake and ice cream at the office at some point tomorrow. So how do we measure success? When we look at primary job creation, do we have new jobs that are in the market? Do we have new employers that are in the market? Do we have companies that are expanding? Are they investing in our economy? When a company invests here, they're more likely to stay here and add to our rates valuable, which ultimately equates into adware taxes for the city. When they've got new primary jobs, we're talking about new disposable income, they're going to be able to spend our local businesses and collect sales tax on it. Workforce development is key for those top two to occur. We've got to have a skilled and trained workforce, and if we do those three things well, the side effects of that is we're going to see additional commercial development, we're going to see affordable housing, and housing being developed. What we know about housing is it's driven by jobs, jobs, and more jobs, and so if we're creating jobs, there's going to be demand for housing. And then community development, the more of this that goes on, whether it be EDC through our resources, it may be the city through their resources, there'll be more opportunities for community development and to continue to enhance the quality of life here. So we look at this as a work and live community, and these are our four target industries that we went through earlier. We won't go into great detail on those again. So the Baskdrop Business and Industrial Park is one of the questions that came in and is what we're doing there. Currently, the, these gray kind of colored lots on this screen, they're not gray on the actual brochure, those are our all existing businesses in the park. LA Electric Supply, Good Salt Brewing, should be breaking ground sometime in the next six to twelve months. Both of those are exciting new additions to the park. The, what's commonly referred to as the Vargas Building is available again, it's for sale or for lease. We're in touch with VCL of Texas, the owner, on that and looking at what our opportunities are there. When I got here, I was asked to look at this infrastructure project in the southern half of the park. I went to the board early in June, and a project was approved to extend technology drive to the south to the cul-de-sac, installing additional regional stormwater detention, a lift station in about this location here, which would serve us not only this part of the park, but also provide some opportunities as you continue to move to the east. The board decided that we wanted to step back and take a look at where we're at and where we're going, which was probably a good decision, now that we've had some opportunity to go through the strategic plan and see what our targets are and assess what our needs are as far as available land. We currently have available about nine acres, ten acres here in the southern part across Jamco. We're currently working a project on one of those lots, one we are not working a project on. This lot here, B one, although it shows the infrastructure is there, you're talking about a cul-de-sac and water and sewer to bring that lot online. It will need regional detention because it does catch the down flow of lot A one here when that lot is ultimately developed. We are working a project currently on this lot that that includes a patient fish, which is what they're looking at doing. Knowing that we're looking at information technology and bio and life sciences, we went to Batco in the last couple of weeks, and we got the information back today from them, and what would be the cost on the top half of A one and A seven here, which is too varied for brain-driven lots. They both have tremendous slope to them. What would it cost to develop pad sites, buildable site improvements that would make them marketable for what we want to do? Lot A one lays out real well for an office campus. We've been in contact with some private developers that have some interest in looking at that lot. I don't know that anything will come of it, but the reason I mention it is, this is a great idea, brings on some of the most developable acres that we have, especially for manufacturing, but A one and A seven also have some opportunity in office, office, campus-style setting that may be more benefit to us in the short term in our recruiting efforts and what we're working on currently as targets. C one and C two over here in the eastern part of the park, that is probably the most severe terrain that we have. Bowman Consulting did a land use study in this compass from C one all the way down here to the southern part of the park. C one and C two is probably an asset that the EDC at some point will divest itself of, is more suited for residential type of development. If there's interest today, we would probably entertain it. We won't get serious about marketing it until the ninety-five construction and the traffic congestion relieves itself a little bit there, and we know what that's going to look like. When we visit with residential developers, whether it be multifamily or single family, they're really trying to stay west of ninety-five at the moment, west of the Colorado River. And so we know it's something we probably want to divest ourselves of, but timing is everything, and really that is in my profession, if somebody walks in the door, I'll bring it to the board at the moment, though I'm not going to spend a lot of time looking for somebody, knowing that the ninety-five construction starts sometime next year.
Did you have to talk to those with A one and A seven on the top part?
We looked at A seven for a project recently. The terrain and the topography was not going to work for that project, so we ended up looking at lot B one with them. We tried to fit that project on, and that was actually their preferred site. Just the size and scope of their project and that terrain wasn't going to work, and so we needed to go down the hill. The site plan that we've looked at from Batco, and we'll share it with the board whenever we get into what our options are at a later date, it lays out well. It's actually to blow that site up to put a buildable pad in there, it's not as cost prohibitive as we would think. It's just a matter of making sure that we've got somebody to market that to, and we know what, have a plan to move forward on. And we just got that today, so we're still evaluating it. A one, we have talked to a private developer about it and have looked at a project on that site, and they'll be in the office in the next couple of weeks to visit with them about what their real level of interest is now that we've done our homework on it. A eight and C three down here are the bottom half of the terrain lots on the eastern part. Those are going to be cut and fill lots. We're going to have to cut the top half of these lots and roll that fill over to the bottom half of the lots, put pads in there. At this moment, with no road infrastructure in there, we're not looking at what that's going to take. There's some other opportunities to tie those in with C one and C two, and so until we get a little bit farther along down in this infrastructure technology Jackson, A eight, for example, is an interesting lot in the information technology sector. We've had at least one conversation about that lot. This lot here has a lot of things going for it, even though it is terrain-driven. It has the ability to loop, loop on a power in from the substation from both directions so you can have redundant power to that site. It also has the ability to air connect with BP and L for dual power, and it has the ability to put onsite, an onsite substation with the LCRA easement to go through. That lot in particular, even though it's going to be an expensive lot to cut and fill, it has redundant power, dual power, and has the availability of onsite substation from LCRA. The other thing about this lot is it also happens to be adjacent to a natural gas transmission line, and with that natural gas, you have the ability to have onsite generation, and S three has indicated that they would be willing to entertain a path and be able to do onsite generation for the right company. And so you have not only primary power and secondary power, but you also have onsite generation capabilities through the natural gas. That leads itself very well into some IT-based industries if we can bring in one gig fiber to the park, and there has been some interest in that, and we're very aware of that and know who we need to be marketing that to. That's why we're hesitant to say at this moment that we're going to throw it in with the residential, when we have some site consultants that work specifically in industries that need that type of power redundancy. There's some opportunity there.
Have you got any quotes on the park? Where can we be?
Fiber.
Fiber, thank you. Can you give us a part?
I have some rough numbers, yes. They're supposed to get back with me from the eastern manhole. We know what it's going to cost to get out of the manhole, which is a very reasonable amount. We know what it's going to cost to get out of the western manhole.
Where is the manhole?
So there's a fiber corridor that runs through, a cable that runs through there, and so think of it like a sewer manhole.
In the park, are you talking about?
It's not in the park, it's actually east of the park, kind of at Tahitian is where it's at. So they've got to go down that hole, cut the fiber, put their connect it, interrupt it, and then come out with basically a hub, in simple layman's terms that I can understand. And then from that hub, getting it to the park, they're working on those numbers for us. And then also on the western feed, the manhole cost, we know what that is, is the feed coming back in the catalyst project that justifies that experience. They're going to get back with me on what those numbers are, which is a conversation we had in the last couple of weeks. There were a couple of competing projects in Baskdrop for one gig fiber. I think everybody, even the competing project agrees with us, this is the best project for us, and so we're working with them to see what we need to do to get that. We don't have a number yet, we're working on it. It's a good point. So that's kind of the park's synopsis and what we think our options are at the moment. We're continuing to put together the pricing structure for the various components of it to make sure that we have a project. We currently have about six hundred and sixty thousand for the 2013 bond issuance. We have sufficient cash to add to that to do a smaller project without going to the bond market. That would kind of probably be my recommendation to the board right now. We have some debt service in fiscal year seventeen that we can retire and give us some capacity in our interest in sinking, and so if we can take that six sixty and pair it with some cash in our, in the bank and do a smaller project in the million, billion, two million, three range, that brings on ten, twenty, fifteen developable acres that we have very targeted marketing for to be able to move those. We'd like to see a couple of these projects come a little bit farther down the road before we come to the board, come to the council, we go to fiscal year seventeen, because we'd like to have projects ready to go on those before we commit those resources.
Mr. Chairman. So that's a question.
Sure. Is the board, at this time looking at, since we mentioned that we got away from developing the lower part of that park, and part of it that wasn't mentioned was the cost of the sizable investment, or just putting in the infrastructure and opening up that bottom of the park and on timeframe on a return on the investment?
Now, are we talking about blowing up on the top part and spending some of that money on the top part, like say, B one, A seven, and A one?
Yes. Has that been brought to the board yet? Had that been brought to the board?
No.
Has this been sort of compensation on your part?
We were asked to put together some options.
I mean, that's what you...
I'm just telling you what the options are we've been working on. Generally, we're kind of pricing out all of the various options, and the ones that make the most logical sense for us will blow it to the top.
Because I thought there could be willingness on maybe some board members to revisit the lower part in smaller phases.
Well, I think what it's brought us on is interest in some, probably eight thousand square foot office building structures, and so it's gotten some interest in that area. These particular parcels each offered, A1 and...
A7.
A7. Those are really, they're appropriate for that kind of development. They are expensive because they have a lot of terrain. But we've got a lot of, we also have a lot of cutting deal that can be transferred right onsite there. So, I think we're looking at about $450,000 or something like that between those two. But, again, we're looking for a project before we would tackle that, you know?
Yeah, we were just asked before, what are our other options? We're very aware of what the pricing structure is to do technology in the south, burn Jackson up, and even we have pricing on the unit six connector. We just wanted to know what the pricing in the north part of the park was on the available lots, A1 and A7 in particular, because I had the pricing on B1. What it would take to make those buildable lots and marketable in the interim to free that up until we get to 2017 or 2018, when we have the interest in sinking relief?
I think, over the last year or so, you know, we've done quite a bit of engineering on, you know, some of the different partnerships. So, we kind of have that information at hand. So, if we do have a project, pretty much know what engineering stuff is going to cost us to build a site, then if we can go and be on it, we should work.
Any other questions about the park before we go on?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Far as the company on board, there was a considerable discussion about some of the open space from these places within the park. And we kind of, I mean, from what I understand, I guess that was kind of delayed. Was there any further discussion on that, or any thoughts on what might happen with that?
Yeah, the board accepted, Bowman Consulting was hired to do a land use study on what is referred to as the east 80 acres over here. C4 here was recaptured as part of the park development within some of our most buildable property, so that was pulled out of the 80 acres. A8 was not part of that, the C3 was. What was accepted by the board was that these properties here, although they may not fit the industrial commercial use that we have, the highest and best use is probably some types of residence or multi-family development within the park. It's an asset of the corporation, and we have an obligation to protect that asset, and it adds value to beneficial use. There were a lot of issues related to doing public space, park space within the park, and the mobility of residents coming and going to the commercial zone. And so, after the board, when they accepted the land use study, this kind of went to some type of future development, either resident, permission use, or from commercial development that it was, and it's all part of the, that Bowman Consulting said the board accepted.
I just, when Conklin did their expansion out there, they needed a place to take a lot of dirt, so we allowed them to take it up and put it in the area they want. So, we've already got a good start on field dirt in that area right now.
Yeah, there's a pretty good stockpile there at the moment. And it makes it unattractive from the street, from a marketing perspective, when you pull up there and go, why is there a big amount of dirt in the middle of this? You just kind of need to get the site prep done, so that whenever you pull up to a lot and you're showing it to a private developer, go that, they go, I can envision what I'm going to be building on the side. That's one of the reasons we went out of Batco and said, hey, what would it cost to level the site up and make it a buildable site? Does that answer your question?
So, in other words, it's been re-appropriated into other types of spaces and not green space or not park land or...
That is correct. At this point, these two lots here, there's some really killer views from up there, because you get up high enough to see one, that you're going to be able to have a view back at the valley of Colorado, whatever. It was Bowman's recommendation to the board that do some type of residential development. There will be open space and green space within that, and they'll have to come up with a city council to go through the P and Z process. But just making it dedicated to parks, it didn't make any logical sense to be able to have those other uses within the community. Any other questions on the park?
Sean.
So, and I'm going to kind of go kind of fast now, because y'all heard me. When we're talking about office, office space, campus-style settings, these are pictures from other parts of the state of Texas, buildings that have been constructed. Most of these are larger, probably not large. The others are larger structure. You know, an IT company is going to have average wages of seventy, eighty thousand, ninety thousand dollars and more. You start looking at some of these bio and life sciences companies, they're going to have wages that are similar to that, and they operate in office-style environments. And this is some, kind of a new concept for Bassdrop. We don't see office, a lot of office space here. But those targets, this is really what they utilize. Going to the housing study, and I'm going to go quick through this, what we're seeing was market segmentation patient that was needed between 150 and 350,000. By the end of five years, we could be close to 250, 250 closing annually with the number of lots that we see being planned and planted at the current moment. That is probably more reality than dream. When you look at what's going on at West Bassdrop Village and the common park, when you look at a couple of the other developments that are in some form of planning process, we're going to see that occur. As we move out in five to 10 years, we're looking at going to 325 closings annually in the Bassdrop area. The bottom one is an interesting identified area by RCL Co. The major active adult community in the Austin metro area will build out in the next five years, and we have very similar characteristics and traits to them. And there may be an opportunity to recruit a highly amenitized active adult community of retirees into our market. And if a developer were to undertake that, you could be looking at an additional 300 closings annually of these active adults in the market. Going out in 10 years, you really just have extended market segmentation across all price points. The multifamily demand analysis, when we asked Carlos Heisman, the CMR, to do that, he came up with 175 to 225 units annually, 875 to 1125 between now and the end of this decade. Anodally, we know, the school district tells us, they need 100 to 150,000 units at the start of every school year for their staff. We suspect that that is similar, we went out and started adding up other occupations within that same pay grade. And we're talking about market rate apartments here. We're talking about the Walnut Bridges of the world, we're talking about the Lodge at Lost Pines, where their market rates... What we also know about market rate apartment complexes is the number of residents per unit and the number of students per unit is significantly less than a single-family house. And so, you hear the myth that they're a burden on the school system. In reality, they're actually a benefit to the school system because they're appraised on the income method, and it goes to the appraisal role as the income method, and there's less demand from an apartment than there is from a single-family house and students. So, one of the things, one of the big trends, and these pictures were all from Texas, Lancaster, Claymont, and Haiti, I believe, but we could have pulled them from McKinney, we could have pulled them from Great Vine. One of the big things that we're seeing in development trends is walkable, mixed-use developments. First floor retail, second floor either office or multifamily. You can go down off of Lamar at the Y, there's a development there. You can go down off of Riverside and Southside and see what they're doing down there. This is more the trend, and it seems to be even in suburban communities like ourselves. If you want to attract millennials and a younger workforce, this is what a lot of them are looking for in that age group at the current moment. There, there's going to be some opportunity to find the right developer that's interested in doing this in Bassdrop. There are some sites that are very well suited for this. It's just the trend in multifamily development and mixed-use development. And there's companies that are looking, especially those unused millennial workers, that want that kind of development because they're going to locate in that mixed-use their office building, and their workers are going to be able to live, work, eat, and play all right there within a walkable community. It's actually, if you cannot mend one, it's pretty deep. Sales tax collections, we do do retail recruiting, so we're looking back here at 2004 in an upward trend. We are monitoring sales tax currently quite closely with a little bit of change in the Texas economy. We saw negative sales tax number in the last reporting period. It's something that raises our eyebrows. If we have two or three reporting periods in which year-over-year sales tax are down, it's probably going to be more than raise our eyebrows. We, at least budget-wise, if that starts happening, are going to tighten the belt. It really would be a lot more impactful because it's a sign that's right in the national economy. So, retail-wise, we still do the recruiting. So, these are basically companies that have announced or have located here in the last six months. I know of a couple that are in the process of signing leases and announce at this moment, but we continue to see lots of interest in coming to Bassdrop or being in the Bassdrop that we continue to be in the hub. We are beginning to see and face some challenges in this market space. There's a pretty significant development that has been announced at 71 and 130 that is a 390-acre development down there. At this point, from what we understand from visiting with the guys that have some knowledge of that, it hasn't gained traction, but if it does gain traction, they start attracting retailers and start turning dirt and breaking ground. That, that location, not only will they attract the retailers that we currently have, they'll also attract the retailers that we want to get. And if that occurs, our retail trade area that cuts off at 130 with that artificial barrier, that, that line will pull back someplace, or our retail consultant, we think it'll be somewhere around Cedar Creek, and we'll lose everybody to the west of that line, that they will start going into that 171, 130 corridor, and it will, and you're talking about some high-disposable income people that all of a sudden are not going to come to Bassdrop and shop, they're going to go to 71 or 130. We're trying to get out in front of that in our recruiting efforts. We have a very aggressive campaign coming up in November and December to try to hedge that off and go after, as I say, companies that they're targeting to be in Bassdrop because we already have that critical mass coming here. But we, we as a community, we're very aware of that, that 71 and 130 corridor could greatly affect our western high-disposal income shoppers that come to Bassdrop, the project there looks forward to being... That's also why we talk a lot about affordable housing, housing in general, in more residents in the core Bassdrop area to continue those retailers wanting to be in Bassdrop versus going to the location that we have had that critical mass. So, we always put a question section at the end of this, it's always the first question I get with most crowds. I don't know if the jaws question did not. We did ask why Target hasn't come to Bassdrop. A lot of that is financial and Target's part. They've gone through a few rough years as a corporation, with their candidate investor earlier this year in exit out of the Canadian market. They're back developing in the United States. What we know from our database of retailers, as well as out of our retail consultant, about 12 projects is what they're going to do here, announcing the remaining part of this year, looking at 24, 36 projects sometime next year. They rolled out a new product, which is an urban core store, and that seems to really be their focus, is going into the urban core with these core stores. I don't know that super Targets are going to go away, but they're going to build a whole lot less of them. I would suspect that that's going to be a very limited market for them, yes, can't...
No, it's just that, a couple of weeks ago, they announced that they are not going to expand to Target for the next calendar year. And they're actually going to try to increase their remaining at Target. They want to widen that gap so that it's offset from the urban market area. So, we're going to see a whole company shift for them, or whether they're going to do from the retail side of the target, which means they're going to really push that at urban Target. We saw the same thing with Walmart not used to go in the market.
Yeah, and to the neighborhood stores, we're seeing the same thing with them.
Interesting.
I think a lot of your retailers are trying to determine how best to compete with Amazon.
What did you say, Mike?
I think a lot of your big-box retailers are rethinking how that the competitor can beat the Amazon. I read in Wall Street Journal last week, Walmart invested $2 billion to set up a, like Amazon.
Yeah. Walmart has already started, they're doing a test market, and four cities that I know of, that they're just starting small, but they're, they're fully starting with full delivery. So, it's, it's going to change the retail landscape that we know today.
Yeah, and if we're going to get a Target, it's going to be more of a traditional Target type footprint, and they're going to build very few of those out of 24, 36 stores. I saw, I saw a store count the other day, out of 24 stores, there may be four or six of them that are more traditional Targets without, without food in them. We're on their list, they evaluate us every time that they, they, they look at new markets. We, this is really driving, we're about $10,000 median household income, less than that, we're in the mid-50s. We've got to have more children's, more families with children, that's really their target market, whenever they're looking at a community, and their median age is looking at about 41. And currently, when you look at our landscape, there's no, no development announced in Bassdrop that Target could go into. There's some, there's some developments that people have said, oh, they can go in my development and I'll put a development together for them, but there's nobody out there with a site plan to be a market is going, here, Target, come here. And so, they, they don't have any place to anchor. We can solve that problem fairly quickly, there's some aggressive developers in our market that we'd be more than happy to satisfy them, but if they walk in my door tomorrow and said, where can we go, we would have to go find a trackway and find a developer. And there's some here in the market that would do it, but there's, there's nobody, there's not a development to shovel revenue, let's just go with that. The second question we get, and we get a lot about restaurants and casual dining restaurants, and these are probably the most popular names that we hear, and what you're going to see the trend among all of these is our population is one-mile, three-mile, five-mile, 10-mile rings. We've got to have household growth here if we want to see, these are similar restaurants to these in the trade area. It's at core Bassdrop. They look at it a little bit differently than the big-box retailers or retail stores. You've got to be able to drive within that mile, three miles, five miles. These are kind of their numbers. We actually subscribe to a database, three dealers, they're surveyed on a quarterly basis, I believe it is. Are you expanding and what are you, what are you looking for? Who's your contact person? We actually know the contact person. Question three, these are kind of healthy foods, it's probably number three of healthy food stores. Whole Foods is going through some financial trouble, but that's the most relevant data we have on them, which is similar across industries. Costco is one that I think would, would look at us, although we're not a 200,000 population. And then, clothing stores, we could ask for mid-tier clothing stores on a fairly regular basis. JCPenney is rolling out a new footprint, both called JCPenney, both are rolling out new smaller footprint stores, again, to compete with the Amazons of the world. And these are going to be changing in the next six, 12 months as those stores start rolling out and figure out what that demographic profile is going to look like. And so, those, those are the questions we normally get whenever I go talk someplace. It may not be all, we decided to leave those in. I asked Steve if he wanted me to take him out, but he thought it was interesting.
It was interesting.
Boy, what? It's boy, what? Do you have more questions?
All right, JCPenney's here.
I feel sorry for everybody having to listen to one more.
This is the exciting one.
This is the exciting one, you know, the law. Actually, not only exciting, but it's extremely brief, and Sean's done a good job of covering the good part of what I'm going to be visiting with you about tonight. The world's worst slide is a picture. The world's worst slide is a picture. I was asked just to give a very short and sweet overview because of the audience that we have tonight with the city council and the EDC to compare and contrast the differences between hotel motel tax revenue and what it can be used for versus our typical type B or redevelopment revenue. And so, I put together, pardon me?
I hope you don't confuse any people in the audience, because it seems like every year people confuse about two.
That's what we've heard, that there is a lot of confusion about them. And so, what I've done are a couple of things tonight, and I'm going to get off this slide to start with. The first thing I'm going to talk to you about is hot revenue and answer any questions that you might have on it. I've given each of you a more extensive detailed paper that I want you to take and keep with you, you can answer people's questions by referring to it, and maybe you can answer your own questions, but of course, always feel free to call one of us and we'll lead you through it as well. The primary thing that people need to focus on when they think about what we call hot revenue is actually hotel occupancy tax revenue, is that it's a revenue source that comes to the city, and the city's actually adopted an ordinance that implements this tax, and it's a fee that's placed on every hotel stay, on every room, when somebody comes and stays overnight in Backdrop. If you think about the source of those funds, which are people that come and stay in hotels, and the title of the fund, which is hotel occupancy tax, it helps you understand where the money comes from, who it goes to, and what the uses of the money should be, and what the statute says that they are. It's generated by the hotel industry, and people that stay in hotels, tourists and visitors to the community. The money comes to the city, the city council is the sole body deciding how that money can be expended. And there are two tests for how the council decides how to spend that money. The first test, of course, is what used to be referred to as the hands and beds, you've all heard that phrase before, but that all boils down to one thing, however you decide to spend the money, the primary goal or purpose of doling that money out in the community is to get more people, more tourists, and more people to spend the night in Backdrop, staying in hotels. We're talking about beds and breakfast, hotels, inns, motels. We're not talking about senior citizens, living facilities, hospitals, that kind of thing. We're talking about the hotel industry per se. When I say hotel, I'm talking about all of those. But every time somebody stays in those, and this has happened to you too, you know, you called and you made the reservation at the Hampton Inn or something, and the hotel room is $125 a night and checkout and pay $140, well, part of that is the local hotel occupancy tax that's been added on to it. And so, that money is paid in by the hotels to the compteur, and the compteur then commits it to the city, the city has it in its coffers earmarked in a fund, and the city council decides how to expend that money. As number one, will the expenditure of that money increase the hotel stays in the future? And then, if answer to that is yes, the second thing you've got to ask yourself as the city council is, will it fit within one to nine statutorily approved types of expenditures? And those are these nine. Now, on your page, you have much more detail and definition about how this is, but a revenue, I know you're all around, but a revenue, we can say that you can spend that money on nine things. One, everybody knows about this convention and visitor center. Two is the administrative costs associated with conventions. Three is tourism-related advertising and promotion of the city and its hotels. So, everybody's familiar with the hike, the marketing agreement, that was hot funds that are directed for tourism-related advertising and marketing, get people to go stay in hotels, come into Backdrop, visit our community as tourists or visitors, spend money here. So, they don't, is what I call category number three. Enhancement of arts, that can be any kind of arts, painting, dance, music, all kinds of arts all within that. Number five is historical preservation and restoration. Six, sporting events for out-of-town participants that results in hotel stays. Those are generally things like overnight soccer tournaments, those types of things. But it could be something like our homecoming rodeo or something where people stay two or three nights or over a weekend. Seven is upgrading and enhancing existing sports facilities. It's not new sports facilities, these are existing ones. And those are some legislative work that we did this year, we now have authority to spend that on our rodeo arena here in town. This particular statutory category, if you look at the act, it's really one of the most earmarked, most targeted expenditures that you'll see in the act. And what happened is, when it was first put in the act, it was very population restricted, you hadn't had over 200,000 people, you had to do this, you had to do that. But as hotel occupancy tax began to improve in various communities, they had needed to use this tax, and it would increase tourism. And so, senators and legislators started, legislators were starting carrying bills that targeted specific communities. So, you may say, oh, well, I know that so-and-so spent hot money on a, I don't know, building a new arena or something like that. That can be a Vinnie tax that's a different type of hotel occupancy tax. So, there are different types of taxes, hotel occupancy taxes, as a matter of fact, that can be adopted, but this is the only one we have here, and it applies only to enhancing and improving existing sports facilities.
Steve, can I ask something?
Yes, sir.
We take for granted that everybody understands what the hotel tax is, like it's seven percent above your regular rate of corporate tax if you pay normally.
Yes.
Seven percent above that.
It can go up to seven percent.
A lot of that.
Yes, we do have the seven percent. In addition, because we have a population of over 35,000, we can also pay, we can also apply that in our ETJ. Now, as our community grows in a few years, when we get that 35,000 population, we will not be able to apply or receive hotel occupancy tax funds in the ETJ. So, that's something that the city will want later on and think about. Um, does anyone have?
I didn't have it plugged in.
Oh, okay. Well, that does make your footprint a question, doesn't it? Uh, we were talking about this word, and thanks for asking those questions, but anything you think, anything that people have asked you and they're not there on, ask us, and maybe I have to answer.
I'm sure when I say this, they're going to say, why are you saying this, but I'm going to throw that there, EDC plays more part in hotel tax.
That's why, that's why, the very first paragraph up there, if you can see it, play it up to the end, it says, only the city controls hotel occupancy tax. So, no matter what great ideas that EDC might have about how that could be used, the best they could do is come make a proposal for some kind of joint work, or we might be able to throw some hotel motel taxes in to something else and come up with a joint effort. But you're exactly right, only the council has the authority to control that. The fifth category was historical restoration and preservation. Six was sporting events for out-of-town participants. Seven, we were talking about existing sports facilities. They added a new one five to six years ago that I think is really great and has been a big benefit in a lot of communities, and that's spending the money for signage to help get people all the highway into town, get our tourists into town, and also the waytime in town to get tourists around to see the things that we want them to see, come out overnight.
Are they talking billboards, or are they talking the other kind of signs?
No, that's exactly right. And then, the last area is tourist transportation, which is relatively new too, it wasn't in the original act, but that has to do with bus systems or shuttle systems that are either open to the city or the city participates in. It takes tourists around town or to the convention center and between hotels for different kinds of things. So, that's a good place to spend your hot as well. So, that's put down very long, hot. Do you have a question?
I have one.
Yeah.
I was asked if the city could do a shuttle service just around the downtown area without stopping at any hotels.
No.
That probably would not qualify well.
No, that does not qualify. It needs to be between hotels, between hotels and tourist destination places, or between hotels and the convention center. The truth of the matter is that when this first started, the biggest push for the use of the money was convention centers, and these were supposed to bring out-of-town conventions into town, create overnight hotel industry. And so, a lot of the verbiage and the statute and a lot of the goals, the promotions are to get people from hotels to convention centers and back again, and that's clearly what the transportation one does. But in addition, it allows them to go from hotel to hotel, or let's say from the hotel to a river destination, or hotel to the opera house, or hotel, so it's to give them the things that we want to see, the historic.
But a hotel has to be involved in the route, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Number one, hotels have to benefit from any expenditure apartment, hotels have to benefit. Yes, sir.
Quick, just to, just to kind of fix that earlier caller's question, could you then specify the times of the week, certain times, certain days of the week, have a route that goes to the hotel, but is also inclusive of other key spots in the city? It was all the time, and we knew that Thursday through Saturday at these times, there was going to be a route, and it may only be for multiple people in our grand shopping, but it's clear included in the hotel. Could you then?
No, this is for low tourism, this is not a convenience for local pilots.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But let's say that there was a hotel shuttle that ran from all of the hotels up to the convention center, then all of the convention center out to the high, and local folks who want to hop on it and get out to those places, it's not that you're going to cart them and not load them on it because they're not tourists, but the purpose of the expenditure has to be primarily to get a tourist to come to town and spend the night. Not, they're not going to get to H and B and, oh, I'm waiting for that.
Oh, no, I wasn't thinking that way. I was thinking of more of what were certain times of the year when we do have events, homecoming weekend, with the events that occur, that the hotel would want, probably going to come down, because it's something that we often think this year, we know what those things are, we put that schedule out in advance.
Well, if it's associated with a.
Event.
A creative project, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
That was my, that was my, that was my.
Oh, when you said certain things, I thought, okay, every church will go to my.
No, when we have those events, when we know there's certain things, example, even when code isn't approached under Act One, that might be a good time to set up during that time of year, homecoming weekend, all these things, that is something that we could do, that could benefit a lot of people.
No, you're right about that, as long as it's associated with a tourist-related event. Well, this is just something that goes faster, that's nice. Sure, okay. So, oh, wait, it's definitely a phenomenon here.
Excuse me. On the same lines with the project that Kate was involved in, rodeo arena.
I think we need to consider our opportunities over the next couple of years, because if we as a community come together and identify with a possible usage, like this additional rodeo opportunity, right? If we have a program that may not necessarily fit within existing, we have to be prepared ourselves to go back to the legislation, maybe a couple years from now, and is that our plan?
That's one way to do it. Keep in mind, and I think that people are thinking, and it's a good idea, and they are being a bit more flexible about this, but keep in mind, they haven't changed these top six, seven uses at all. Those have been there from day one. They added eight, which is signage, and nine, which is transportation. What they have done on one through seven is they've modified some of the population limits and some of the locations, what I call prerogative legislation, but they haven't changed one through seven. It would have to fall in this, and then you would have to see if there was a carve-out for a certain population city, and that's where your opportunity would be. That's what we took advantage of this time. We said, well, if we have an existing sports facility, the rodeo arena, it'd be upgraded and enhancing, but we didn't meet the population requirement for that. And so, we thought, and had a prerogative deal that says, well, if you do this, this, and this, even though you don't meet the population, we'll let you do this. And so, that's how we were successful with that. But going and saying, well, we like these nine, but we want number 10, that's really more than a year or two's worth, that's a decade.
Right, but what I've been told is that a hotel association monitors different trends that folks follow, for example, tournaments like, and currently, tournament play, whether it's softball program, or little league, or volleyball tournaments, or what have you, they are attracting a large number of folks to a community. Those are opportunities that communities are developing to attract tourists to their areas, because so many, I mean, the large number of folks that are able to attend, not just participate, but also to come and be expected, so we just, I'm pointing at is that if we start, it's going to take us a number of years to develop an idea, if we keep conscious, our subconscious of what's available and what the opportunities are west or east of Boston, we need to be prepared for two years of that.
That's true, that's true. So, that's, that calls, as you can see, red, highlighted, underscored, only the city controls that. Are there other questions about hot?
I have one.
Some cities, by the way, don't grant hot out to anybody, they keep all themselves, and they use all themselves to do convention centers or internal tourist-related marketing, those kinds of things. That's not how Backdrop is funded, but different communities use the expenditure hot in different ways. Some of them put 100% of it to the support of one project, like a convention center or whatnot. Do you have a question?
Excuse me. I keep hearing a lot of comments that the businesses outside of downtown would like more attention from the hot funds. What can we spend hot funds on for, like the businesses on 71? Is there any?
No.
Just on, it's just if they have an event or sponsor an event, or?
They're not really, that's not the target of hot funds. Hot funds target the hotel to benefit the hotel industry. If there are hotels on 71 and whatnot that will benefit from overnight stays, and they fall back in one of these nine, there's a project that comes into one of these nine, yes, that would benefit them like it would benefit anyone else. But same for say, benefit a retail business on 71, that's something that hot is designed to do. Hot is designed to promote tourism into community. Hot is designed to promote tourism into community and put someone in a hotel. Does that make sense? Did that answer the question?
It does. Thank you.
I just wanted to just flag the fact that there's a lot, there's, that's a simple answer. There's a, we're complicated answer that we talked about a couple of times. I got, it, I mentioned events. It's a lot of things that businesses.
There's a lot of things.
Highway could do that would work in that regard, and so I'm just totally, uh, like, like incidentally benefit the business.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm just saying, there's a, there's a broader conversation.
Right, right. And, you know, if you get a lot of people in town spending weekends and coming to events, it, it's going to benefit, uh, all of businesses in town, you know? Food, it just is recognition, it, it's just a healthy economic, uh, opportunity for the entire community.
What I've heard is they feel excluded because the majority of the hot funds go toward the main street area, which is historic and hasn't, and falls into a lot of those categories. I was just wondering how we can include them better. So you say, Ken, that there are more ways to do that?
I'm, I'm saying it's a conversation we ought to have. Do you want to figure out what DMAs business, not a lot more than a park? Maybe it'll be part of our DMO conversation. But I think there's, I think there's a, all I want to say is, I, I think there's more to it than just what J C said from a legal standpoint.
Yeah, I'm giving you the, the law on it. Uh, there certainly is tourism related advertising that promotes the city and hotels. And so that's an expenditure that you could tout a lot on billboards about what the community has to offer as far as all businesses, you know, all shopping experiences for tourists and those kinds of things. So that's one type of thing that the mayor might be talking about.
Might speak about that in, in more detail at some point.
I, I would like to do that too. Uh, for instance, um, if the regional marketing and signage that we put up to promote the whole city, uh, is for everyone and all those folks, uh, when that happens. So those sorts of things will directly enhance, uh, more business, I think, on, on the side of.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. It, like I say, it's entirely different if you're in a, sure. But if you're saying, can we take, from a real simplistic point of view, could the city council say, well, I want to take this $50,000 and give it to J C Brown's hat shop on 71? No, that, that is not a qualified hot expenditure because I don't fall into any of these categories. I'm coming and buying a hat, doesn't take all weekend, you know? It's just, it's not a step. Uh, there may be other ways to incentivize those, uh, those types of businesses, but from the hot perspective, purely legal, this is what it's got to be. And that starts with putting a, a person in a hotel room. Okay. So that's, that's it. And this is the city's, uh, responsibility, uh, that is taken on and working to qualify. Now we go to what about the B E B C? What is its responsibility and what does it have the authority to control? And frankly, Sean's pretty well covered it, so we can sit this through this very quickly. Uh, it's the four video type, the sales tax revenue that comes to the, uh, the four B corporation. And we do focus on primary jobs, uh, projects that create and maintain primary jobs, that manufacturing, utility, warehousing, the things that you saw earlier, research and development, land buildings and equipment. And I've outlined some NIC codes in the memo for you. You can take a look at what falls within those, um, codes that qualifies primary jobs. But there are also some B E B C projects that could be done that do not have to create primary jobs. Those are things like job training classes or community, commuter light rail or bus, um, opportunity, professional sports and athletic facilities. Now, keep in mind, this is professional, and there has to be an election held for these, and the citizens of the community have hearings and determine whether or not they want this type of expenditure by the B E B C or not. This isn't just a, an instant decision on a professional sports facility, but that is something that B E B C folks have been spent for. Entertainment and tourist convention facilities, public parks, related open space improvements, or the housing, water, time and conservation, by the way, spoken of some other ways. And infrastructure to promote or expand new or existing businesses, such as roads, certain facilities, electric, gas, electricity, etc. It's a part of primary jobs. So, uh, there are things that a B E B C, the B E B C can, um, enhance or incentivize and do not require primary jobs. But as most of the experts that you've spoken to have told us, this is where you get your money for your buy. Yes ma'am.
What are the limitation, boundary limits for geographically that B E B C can invest money?
It can go out into the E B C.
Yeah. So on our, by law, the marketing dollars that we have available to us, we can, we can spend up to 10% of our revenues on an annual basis on marketing. And, uh, we can actually say we had 190,000 last year in the marketing, and we spent 160, and there was 30,000 left over. We can actually roll that 30,000 forward into the next year and spend 220,000, say we're looking at a website redesign, one year to the next.
We can bank it.
But when you're looking at a project basis, if we go out into the county and do a project with branding and incentive of some kind, uh, number one, our board has to approve it, the city council has to approve it, and we have to go ask the county's permission to be able to go through that. Yes ma'am.
Just to clarify, that's 10% of our portion, our 10% of the total.
It's 10% of the E B C by the way. So we're basically a 1.9 million dollar budget. Our max expenditure on an annual basis for marketing is 190,000 dollars. Uh, we can carry forward, not spend dollars, not something that we've traditionally done, it's not even something that I recommend, but that is how the law is, is written, having a legal discussion.
And you certainly don't have to earmark 10% for marketing. That's kind of a cap, not a minimum.
We're between five and six percent.
So do you have like a checklist or like those nine things we can spend on for hot funds?
Well, the E B C doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Is it, is it E B C? No, because they're not involved with that.
No, I don't.
Do they have a similar type tool?
Yeah.
A similar check tool for what your expenditure on?
So, okay. Right. There's, uh, there's this much more complex, and, and you'll see it when you get into the paper. Everything they do has, has to be statutorily authorized, uh, and the statute is, goes through a local government code chapter 501 to 505, and it goes back and forth. You know, what I gave up here on this is just a real quick 10 or 12 point summary, but your paper has separate pages on it. It's, uh, manufacturing, uh, all kinds of opportunities. But he and I do talk, and the board always asks questions at talks, I, I'm telling Kate this because she may not have seen this happening. When a project comes, the first thing we do is talk about where does this fall? Does this fall in a NIC code? And tell me which one it falls in. And we have that discussion back and forth. We always do that. And if it's not a NIC code, then we say, okay, is this something that can be done without primary jobs? Does it fall in other, uh, type, uh, areas?
Like parks related to open space improvements, for instance? Would you check that with how that would help? Is this opportunities, or is it just something you say, oh, that's a nice one, we'll do that?
No, I, the, my experience is, and you can talk to the board about it, but their first question is always, what does this do to improve the economy and economic vitality and growth of the city? And they don't, that's the first question they ask on everything. And if it's not going to do that, then it's not something that gets much traction, in my experience. But the board is not going to talk.
It doesn't make sense. You know, it's going to be, you know, basic mission statement for the E B C.
Sure. It has to fit along.
That's, that's just common sense.
Sure, sure. Any other questions about what the E B C does? And of course, as you know, and as Sean said, and as you've seen during your tenure as a councilwoman, when projects come along, they've already been discussing with you, and you have an opportunity to, to pipe down on that, say, okay, yes, no. And you'll remember that back in 2012, we held an election and specifically passed, uh, had a ballot that allows the water supply and conservation. And the B E B C has been a big partner in, in that particular effort within the city. Which brings me to the point that while the city council deals with hotel motel, and the B E B C deals with the four B tax, there's a lot of interplay between these, and a lot of good things that can be accomplished by the synergy, um, that might make a project possible that wouldn't have been possible otherwise.
Which is why we, we made our bylaws, there's, you know, the water supply.
Exactly. Exactly, exactly. So even though each of you have your own statutory authority, the own, your own law and the own control over these two pots of money, my experience is, especially in the last four or five years, there's been a great willingness to evaluate opportunities to kind of get an exponential benefit from the deal.
Would you be talking, J C, about why it's important for Main Street programs to get money, it's not just hot funds? In other words, if they only get hot funds, they can only do all this with marketing, right?
Right, it has to be tourist related.
Right. So if, if Main Street program has to plug Main Street.
Right.
Then it needs money that's not from hot funds.
That's true. That's true. And that's what the E B C has traditionally assisted with. And that helps the E B C do the, well, I guess I meant the bad, but it, it helps to do the promotion of existing businesses. The Main Street does a lot of promotion for the existing businesses, the vitality of the community as a whole, much like the Desa and Fredson, I mean, that particular expenditure and that work by the E B C has been a real turnaround, um, in that particular portion of the city, but also it all goes to everything else. So it, it ends up making a vibrant community that people walk up to and want to visit and.
It's a big success story. I've been talking about across the state, across the major.
But you're exactly right. The hot funding has to be for the long distance overnight marketing. For the E B C, it can be marketing, uh, that allows.
Local businesses.
Local businesses, certainly. And that's the marketing.
At least from my perspective as staff, there's some things that, part of the Main Street directive is every month, is with Main Street directive, visiting every business in Main Street district, it relieves us of that duty of having to do our business retention and expansion program in the district. We just need to get feedback from them and what they're doing within the district. And, and when you look at the concentration of businesses within a geographic grid, it's a high density in the Main Street. It relieves us of doing it in Main Street, doing that kind of on our behalf to allow us to focus outside of the district. And so there's some ancillary benefits to us.
Sure.
In, in, in the program. They also provide the entrepreneurial ready program for us. And so when we have a small business client come in our office, that goes over to Main Street, and the entrepreneurial readiness team works with them, uh, and if they weren't doing it, we would be doing it in our shop. And so we receive some benefits that relieve the, the business retention expansion, will relieve a little bit of small business. Now, if they come into our shop, we log them into project, we track them, uh, to make sure that we're, we're, they're getting the service that they need. But there's some things that Main Street does for us in exchange for us helping fund that program.
In addition, there's benefit to the community from having that kind of healthy, attractive, vibrant, historic downtown, because when he takes a prospect on a tour of the town, you don't want to see plywood on windows. I mean, nobody wants to move their family and all of their workers into a community that appears to be going down.
Totally agree.
There is a definite benefit to the marketing expenditure.
It, it just feels to me like Main Street is in a unique position because it, it promotes the local businesses, but it also is such an incredible help of business marketing too. So I, I, I think it's an extremely wonderful way that we can share the cost of that, make sure that you can be helping invite them for a third one.
It's a unique challenge, and it certainly has made a dramatic progress.
Yeah.
For, for that. Any other questions?
One more quick one.
Yes ma'am.
Um, on a previous B E B C agenda, a couple months ago, it was asked what role the B E B C could play with the DMO. I don't see anything that, that, that falls in that. Can you expand on, can they, can they play a role with the DMO?
I do think they can play a role. I think they have to play a role, actually. I think.
Maybe it's number four?
Maybe number four. I don't know how to make another one. Uh, number four, tourist convention facilities and entertainment. The Main Street is a huge draw for people that want to bring, uh, conventions into town and have their conventioniers able to walk and do something entertaining, the color history, the art, uh, experience is, is a big draw. So I think if you're up here, I think it could go promoting existing businesses. I think that they, they do have a role to play in that. And I think that they can contribute to that, so.
They legitimately legally can do that, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good.
10% can be spent on marketing. And A G is in the issue of, an opinion, I believe, that says you can extend marketing funds to promote, uh, the economic development of the community, even if it's not an identified project per se. That was a gray area for many, many years, but finally, yeah, a few, uh, A G decisions started falling in our favor and saying, look, we, we want you to do some proactive marketing too. I, I think that. Anything else?
Steve, I would say something that, that I think is important as far as, as where we are as far as sales tax. And, uh, I know Mike gave a report at the meeting the other night that, you know, we might have hit a stab, but hopefully this is stagnant time for, for a short time, and we don't take it yet. I've always monitored where we're at with other central Texas cities our size, how we compare, and I always looked at Lockhart, Marble Falls, and Taylor, and places like that. And here we are with cities, 8,000 people, and we're sitting in a, in a good economy, I think. And I think it's a milestone for a city to reach $4 million in sales tax in a year.
Oh, yes.
And, and, you know, I think, I thought, I remember in, in the late eighties, city was sitting at 300, 250,000 a year in sales tax. To come from there to $4 million and be the size that we are compared to other cities that are larger, maybe twice our size.
Take credit for that.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
I, I just want to make a comment one time, uh, if this relates to the, the hot funds of the E B C and seeing it all, it seems like, you know, I appreciate this meeting to kind of clear some of the lines. I think there's a, a lot of people pointing, wanting to point the same direction, well, we're kind of not. And I think as we, as we move forward and look at the children's marketing, and with the Main Street marketing, with the E B C marketing, we forget whatever market you shared, and you decide to go for the Hyatt. I think it's very important, in my opinion, then we all say the same message.
Absolutely.
Even though Main Street is unique, it's different, even though Hyatt's different, we have to say the same message. That's how we're going to be all inclusive with every business. The minute we start, start to segment that, the minute we're starting to alienate someone from this area or someone from that area, we have to do that. And you know, that's.
We don't want to do that.
We don't. From, for me, at least at B E B C's example, you know, turn to the council and put something, help us put something together so we can have a strategic marketing plan, so that someone says, look, we're going to spend X amount of dollars. It's the same message.
That's where the DMO is coming in.
Well, you know, you, you make, you make, you start that process, you bring all those people to the table and sit them there all at one time. You don't, you don't have us two groups, you need to have everybody there that you just talked about, and make that same point where everybody's on board.
That's the only, that's the only way we're going to go to.
That's the whole reason that this DMO is being put together, so that we can concentrate on the unified message, you know, unified reason to bring people in, unified everything.
You made a good point, but that's, I think that's long as you're going to get started until you bring everybody to the table and everybody, that's what, that's what our message needs to be. Yeah.
I want to, are we, are we, we have adjourned workshop yet? Yeah, I was going to do that in 10 minutes. City council will adjourn, it's a workshop session to go into regular session. I need to ask, even though item five says we're going to, four says we're going to adjourn, is there anybody on the council that's not on the B E B C, that's going to stake interest in the B E B C?
Do we need to?
We try.
Do we need to?
No, no, what I'm saying, I'm not going, I'm not going to adjourn the meeting if you're going to stay, because, well, we need to, we need to, we'll have a forum here. So, if y'all are all going to leave, I'm going to adjourn, have us adjourn the meeting, if not, we're going to reset.
Aren't we supposed to have a forum anyway?
Just talk to J C about it. Yeah, we are, but if we adjourn, we're not, we're not there anymore.
Is there anything on the agenda that you would like council input for? Want to stick, stick around and talk to you about anything?
Yeah, there's not much, right.
Housekeeping minutes and financial.
So, you don't need us.
And then we're going to go to effective session, maybe one.
Oh, yeah.
Effective session, something that may be.
Denied, so we adjourn.
You, Doc, you leaving?
I'm leaving.
You leaving? Okay, the city council is in a regular session. Doc, you want to move, will you adjourn?
I'm moving.
Second, second, now, Willie. A show of hands, one, two, three, four, you wrote me yes, raise your hand.
You adjourned?
Yes, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Raise your hand. Five, I saw, I counted with my eyes, five different times, we're adjourned.
I made most of the adjourn. You got laughed at me.
Don't play, I didn't agree at all.
That was an excellent meeting, by the way.
I knew you worked that out all night, now you want to.